And be with us tonight and guide us as we do city business in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll enter into our audience for visitors. I would like to offer to those in attendance tonight that the last time we had people who came in and spoke to the school board positions, some people said that they didn't get the opportunity that they wanted to. So tonight during this audience for visitors, if there's anyone that would like to speak in support of one of the school board members, you can do it at this time. So now I will ask for those who would like to speak under the audience for visitors.
Yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is Fred Hildor. I'd like to speak on behalf of Alan Melton for the school board. He's an outstanding candidate. My family and I have known the Meltons in all of our 16 years of living in Pecosin. Our three children have grown up together with theirs through our city schools. We've watched Alan and Melanie as they have lovingly and faithfully raised their family in our community. This couple and this family know what it's like to have a high achiever in our school as well as to have a student who is struggling. They've served in our schools. They've supported athletics and fine arts programs. They're deeply committed to our community. Alan is intelligent. He has boundless common sense and he's compassionate. He has served with our school PTO. He's been avid with the band boosters and with the Pecosin and New Horizons Career and Technical Education Advisory Boards. Alan has excelled in his own education, earning his MA and EDS degrees with high honors from George Washington University. His bachelor's is locally from CNU. His own vocation has been dedicated to the education and training of young men and women at the apprenticeship school. You'll be hard-pressed to find a candidate as well-rounded as Alan Melton, someone who understands the academic and the vocational aspects of education. He thinks outside the proverbial box. He's future-oriented. He's solidly grounded in his values and his integrity. He's extremely competent in his reasoning and his vision and his principal desire is for all students to be valued and to be successful whatever path that might take them. Thank you for your time this evening as I speak on behalf of Alan Melton.
Thank you. Are there others in attendance who would like to speak? If not, I will move into the approval of the minutes.
You're telling that this school was still?
No, this is, no. You can speak now on any subject you wish.
I'm prepared. Good evening. My name is Isaiah Smith, Vice Mayor and the Council. I'd like to bring to your attention a little task and I want to thank you first also for some of the things which you all have accomplished with me. And I'm honored to say thank you on the assistance you rendered in the reclaiming of my property. Tonight, I am forever grateful for that. But tonight I brought an issue before you that the council and your city's attention will be needed, I think. And that if it's okay, I would like to give each one of you all a copy.
Please.
Who can I approach?
The Vicky and she'll pass it.
Okay, certainly. I'll wait till you all get them, please. If you would, you don't want me to read it, right? You can read it for president, right? Okay, well then I'll make it short. In an off cuff meeting with the mayor and councilman and the city attorney, he did make notion, he made mention, this petition was now drawn up here, that the city has the right due to the state code to change addresses. And with the problematic problems we have here, it is almost rendered to be a major health hazard with that ongoing dust all the time. And my house is full of dust. I can't use my deck, nothing, you know? And so if the city has that right and the authority to do that, I would ask you, the council and the mayor, would you all assist in seeing that it's done, please? Because it's going to boil down the summer to a much more problem with all this dust. Okay? And I thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Smith, what is your address on Joseph Topping, please? Thank you.
Are there others in the audience who would like to address council? If not, we will move into approval of minutes. I'll ask for approval of a regular session dated May the 11th, 2009.
Vice Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt the minutes of May 11th, 2009, regular session.
Second.
Motion in second has been made. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Certainly. Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Crawford.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Holloway.
Aye.
Vice Mayor, the motion carried by vote six to zero.
Now I would ask for a motion on the work session dated May 11th, 2009.
Mr. Vice Mayor, make a motion we approve the minutes of the work session of the city council meeting on May 11th, 2009.
Second.
Motion made in second. Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Holloway.
Aye.
Mr. Vice Mayor, the motion carried by vote six to zero.
We're now moving into Section E, public hearing. First that we will be discussing is the capital improvement plans for fiscal year 2010 through 2014. Judy, do you have anything to add to this?
Yes, Mr. Teresa Owens and Jennifer Parrish of the school board will give a joint presentation on the CIP.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of council and citizens of Pecosin. Tonight I present to you the CIP plan for the city of Pecosin for the fiscal year 2010 and for the next five years. The last CIP prepared and adopted was two years ago for fiscal year 2008 and beyond. Even though this plan is presented after the budget, self-staff felt like it was important to inform the public and council of the projects needed throughout the city.
Teresa, is your mic on?
I don't know.
Let's check, Teresa.
Sorry. This plan was adopted by the planning commission in April and some of the items in the plan are the same as the 2008, but some of them have changed, some of them are new, and we've deleted some of the items. The CIP includes equipment vehicles and construction projects and our threshold for those projects for anything over $100,000, which is a change from the previous years, from 2008 prior. Schools are one of our most critical capital needs the city pays for. The city pays for all the larger ticketed capital items for the schools. The schools pay for some of the smaller items such as the desk replacement and computers. And Dr. Parrish is here to address specifically the CIP for the school division.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Holloway, members of council. Thanks for allowing me to present the school board's CIP for the year. I'd like to move you through this, and I believe you have this presentation, but this is actually the table that shows all of the projects that have been placed on the school board's CIP for this year. A couple of things I'd like you to note, one being the funding issue. Please know that we are very well aware of the fact that funding is tight as we've all finished our budget process. So we are not coming to you right now asking for funding for the projects that you see in FY 10. In fact, what we are very hopeful of is with the stimulus money that the school division is receiving, that we will be able to address some of these projects during the course of next year. We're still waiting for some specifics from guidance from the federal government as well as the state government, but we are optimistic about that. Also, as Teresa noted, on the city's CIP, you do not place items under $100,000. We do have items under $100,000 in our CIP because we need to have them recorded and also we do not maintain a reserve to cover the cost of these. So as we need to approach getting these projects completed, we need the public to understand that they do exist. With that said, what I'd like to do is briefly walk you through our CIP. Let's start with the primary school. As you can see here, what we've placed on the CIP for FY 10, again recognizing that we're not going to receive funding from the city for that for next year, but hopefully being able to tackle that through stimulus funding, is the HVAC system for $145,000. As you know, there's been some discussion out there that we've struggled with the HVAC system with the primary school for a number of years. In particular, this would especially help us fix the gym and the cafeteria area because we still run into moisture control. Although the air quality is fine for students and staff, we do need to get this HVAC system finally up and running as it always had, should have been running. The next item you see is the gym floor. Again, an item under $100,000, but it is something that needs to be repaired. The carpeting in the gym floor has been down for 19 years now. We do have some moisture issues in there, so that is an issue for us. We're also hopeful that if we can get a better gym floor surface down in the primary school, it would be more beneficial to parks and recs. So we might see more community use of the gym in the primary school if we get the right kind of floor down in there. And that's a cost of $32,000. It was placed on the CIP for FY 11. Pavement at the primary school, it is starting to alligator, so we've placed that on the CIP for FY 12 at a cost of $66,000. Paving in our parking lots is an issue we need to contend with on a regular basis. And finally, the roof for $350,000 in FY 15. During that year, that roof will be 25 years old. As you know from your homes, you need to anticipate roof replacement or heavy roof repair. So by FY 15, we know we're going to have to tackle that at the primary school. So those are our primary school projects. So again, back to here, I have good news. You'll notice that the elementary school has no projects listed. We have nothing on the CIP because we are thoroughly enjoying our wonderful new building. However, the middle school, this is an area which you see a number of projects and this school does have the highest dollar value for us on the CIP. I want you to note that several items are asterisks. The asterisks are for projects that if we do the middle school renovation in the relatively near future, that those could be wrapped up in the renovation project. If we do not get that school renovated in the relatively near future, we're going to have to tackle those projects separately. I also want you to note that we're recommending renovation here because we know that's a very historic building for Pecosin. So we believe it can be renovated, we can fix the issues that we have with it and still save the historic nature of the building. And the location is obviously important for us as well. Let me start, though, with the HVAC system. In the middle school, we have the boilers and the AC chiller are both 24 years old right now. So we are concerned about them. We know they need to be fixed and they need to be fixed as soon as possible. It is a high dollar ticket item at $200,000, but that is here on the list. Again, if we renovate, we could look at doing that as part of a renovation. Our maintenance staff is doing an excellent job of keeping them running. Also, the locker room in the middle school. At $190,400, we put that on for FY 11. The locker rooms are quite old. We have showers that aren't fully functioning. They're very small. And they are also used as the restroom facilities when football games and other major sporting events occur in the new field behind the middle school. So repairing those would actually help us with the crowds that we see come through for those events. A recommendation would be to wrap up into the renovation, a renovation to the locker room. There's been some talk of creating a field house of some sort to go with that football field. You could actually renovate that into the middle school when you do the entire building. So again, we could better meet community needs for other activities rather than just the school activities as well by doing it that way. The gym roof at $110,000 for FY 12, that is a composite roof, and when we get to FY 12 at two, it will be 25 years old. So we need to do a replacement for that. Again, if we renovate it, it can be wrapped up into that. If not, we are going to need to look at getting that gym roof done sooner rather than later. If we move forward with the renovation, we've got A&E architectural and engineer services down for $697,200. Know that the figure we've used through the renovation is based on the average cost provided by the Virginia Department of Education for middle school renovations at this time. So we can anticipate as we push this out that cost going up, the A&E services is a percentage then of that renovation cost. We would need to have those done the year prior, obviously, to the actual renovation of the building. You'll also notice here trailers. We're proposing that we move the students out of the building into trailers for the year of the renovation. As you can imagine, doing a thorough renovation of a school could create some issues for us to maintain the instructional programs that we now provide our students if we have a lot of construction going on while instruction is occurring. We've looked at placing those trailers somewhere near the high school. We can actually share some facilities with the high school during the course of the instructional day, such as the cafeteria, potentially some gym space. Again, we'd have to take a hard look at how this would work exactly, but we're confident we could make this work as we renovate the middle school. Clearly from the list above, you can see there are a number of reasons for the need for the renovation of the middle school, but to add to that, as you may be well aware of the fact, currently, we cannot get students or staff with physical disabilities up to the second floor, and we provide a lot of instruction on the second floor of that building. So whenever we do have a student or staff member in that situation, we have to shift classrooms around, even if it's for a two to three week period, and in some cases it's for three years if the students are with us. So that is an issue that we're facing now. Also, the electrical system in that school, needless to say, is quite old as well. So if we look to expand technology, we're going to have some difficulty doing that using the current electrical system structure that we have in that building. So we really see for a variety of reasons a need for a renovation. The other thing I want to mention before I get to the high school is, as you are probably well aware of the fact, there's been a need to renovate the high school to get the forum into a full-scale auditorium because our students have to go down the road to Tab High School every time we have some kind of major performance. If we do a full renovation of the middle school, we could renovate an auditorium into that middle school and not have to then go into the high school and renovate and create an auditorium in there. Also, again, I would say if we get a large auditorium in the city, I would imagine community groups would use it extensively. I know we have PIPS at the middle school now, but I would see a number of other groups having access to something in the city, not having to leave for those major events. So again, a way to do some cost savings by doing it all as part of that renovation. So again, back to this, now you see the high school is the next one. The next item, again, one under $100,000, but one that does need to be addressed at some point is the high school locker room. They are not large locker rooms. We have trouble holding large athletic equipment in there. For example, when football is in season, lockers do not hold all that football equipment, and we have some issues with that. Again, we have showers that aren't working fully and we need a real renovation to get those functional. So that is something we put on the CIP for FY 11. The track has been on a CIP for the school division and for the city for a number of years. It doesn't meet VHSL requirements, so we have that listed at FY 12 for $300,000. Again, the forum here, the price now for that is estimated at $2.3 million. As I suggested earlier, we do believe that's something that could be renovated into the middle school and meet the needs of the high school as well as the community and be a cost savings ultimately by not going and doing two major renovations in buildings. By FY 14, you see the HVAC system on the high school. Our high school right now has 80 ceiling units tied to the HVAC system that in FY 14 will be 17 years old. As you know from your own air conditioning systems, within 17 years, you're going to see a need for repair and replacement of those systems. So we've listed those on the CIP so that the community is aware that that problem is going to start to exist by then. And finally, pavement. Again, the same issue we face in our other parking lots. We're starting to see alligatoring already. We also know at the high school, we may want to look at how that traffic flows. I don't know if you've ever been there, like last night when we had the baseball and softball games there, when you have a real full parking lot, there may be ways to better engineer that traffic. So we would wrap that into that work on the pavement, and we put that out for FY 15. One thing you'll note is that our CIP does go out till FY 15. The city's CIP goes to FY 14. I believe Teresa shifted some things in, so you would see it on there, but we did have things pushed out that far. The last section on this is actually division-wide. We have two items on this, an access system for $52,000, again, under $100,000, but something that we want to make everyone aware of. We did have that down for FY 10, again, fully understanding now the funding's not available for that. That would give us, what we're looking at doing there, doing electronic door accesses for the buildings and putting cameras at the front doors that could then be accessed by the offices. As you may be aware, we currently have staff in our schools manning those front doors. This would actually enable us to utilize staff in another way and save some staffing by having cameras at the doors that then the main offices could actually use those cameras to see who's coming in and out. Also, there has been a change in lighting. On July 1st, 2010, T-12 ballast will no longer be available. We have those throughout our school, so we have to move to T-8 ballast. So we need to begin to purchase those so we can make this lighting conversion. So once the change occurs nationally, we're caught up on that. And that's $126,000, and we did put that in for FY 10, bringing that total to $178,000. So as you can see here, the total for our CIP that we've proposed is over $15 million with the bulk of that going to the middle school. I would say to you, that is where, in terms of talking with you and talking with the community, I think our greatest need right now is the middle school. I'm again hopeful that using some stimulus money, we can knock off some of these other projects and perhaps as a community, our focus can be that middle school and trying to do some things there that will meet the needs, some other community needs while we're doing that. So with that, I thank you again for your time this evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I've got a question. Can I ask it now? Sure. You have like $300,000, $300,000 in stimulus money, somewhere around there, for school upgrades and things?
Yeah, we should, we're looking at probably having somewhere around $300,000 that we would have that we'll be able to address these projects. What we're still getting are some of the rules of the projects that you can do. So the school board's actually meeting next week to approve the use of funding since you finished your work. So we're going to put some possible projects to do, and once we know that they meet the requirements, there's certain things on how green they need to be and some other things. Even up till last week, I'm still getting clarification from the government as to what you can actually do with that funding. But we are hoping to get some of these projects off the docket with that funding.
It sounds like the conversion from T-12 to T-8 lighting is a priority?
That's one that we will more than likely, as long as it meets the requirement, meet. I'll tell you, we're looking to probably at the primary school to see if we can take care of some of those things there, and then we'll see where we can go. But we'll know more and obviously we'll keep the community well informed with where we're heading with that funding.
And the last thing, Dr. Parrish, is, you know, there's a big push in Virginia for Go Green Virginia, VML, the Virginia School Board Association, and VAECO is all, you know, involved in it. And there's grants out there from Department of Energy, and I don't know whether there's any grants out there to change like your boilers to geothermal energy and stuff like that. I mean, I don't know who your grant writer would be or, you know, but it's a possibility that there could be, you know, dollars out there to, you know, solve some of the problems in the older schools.
Yeah, know that, you know, we look at all those grant opportunities and we'll continue to do so, and certainly geothermal, we did that with the elementary school is something that we'll look at as we move into the other schools. So, thank you.
Right. And echoing what Frank said, it seems that the Hy-Vac replacements would be a prime candidate for energy efficiency, too.
Correct. And we're looking at different ways. We're actually making some tweaks, I know, at the high school to make our high school more energy efficient with the equipment that we have now. So know that, you know, as we're doing even the little things that we can to do that with our schools.
Dr. Parrish, now you said that you're still waiting for clarification of some of the rules. Do you have any hope that we're going to get more than $300,000?
Well, remember that we've gotten $919,000. With $300,000 of that, we're going to have to do, we're going to do some transferring to get you your $300,000.
Right, we're getting $300,000, which is off the table.
Exactly, that's yours. And then about another, close to about another 300, we're having to put in to save some jobs because we got cut additionally from the general assembly after we completed our budget work. So we're going to go backfill in so we don't have to go to a riff with teachers. And then the remaining funding is what we'll use for our CIP funding.
So do you see that funding going up at all? Is there a possibility of that, or is the maximum?
No, from the ARA stimulus funding, $919,000 is what we're being told that we'll be getting.
Okay.
We'll have some special education funding, but there are some, as you can imagine, some real strings attached to that, and that's not intended for building, repair, or upgrades.
So your improvements that you've got for the middle school, HVAC, locker room, gym roof, and I guess the trailers, they would, they're the offsetters to renovation?
No, the HVAC, the locker room, and the gym roof are the things that absolutely need to be done in the very near future. The trailers are, if we go to renovation, we'll actually move the students into trailers for the year of renovation. So we need to lease those trailers to be able to do that. So they're tied into the cost of the renovation.
So they would be included in the renovation cost?
Yes, in the total cost of it. But they would need to be leased, they're out, they're in FY 12 because we'd have to start that lease and get them set up the year prior to the actual renovation. So then in FY 13 is when you actually see the full cost of the renovation with the A&E obviously already have come out.
Well, yeah, and I think, I think, you know, since we just came through the budget, that 2013, I'm not sure that the city would even qualify for taking out the funding necessary to do that type of renovation, much less the tax burden.
Yeah.
So do you have an alternate plan on how you would keep the middle school up and operating until a renovation?
Well, that's when we're going to then have to look at the HVAC, especially the HVAC system, and see what we can do to keep it up and running until then as we start those discussions of when we can look as a community, starting the school. Please know that we had developed this, it was earlier in the fall. We actually had this ready to go by late November, so the economy hadn't quite taken the downturn that it has since then.
And that's why I'm, I want to be a little realistic here.
Right.
And I hear you, and I think we all know as a council, I think we all know as a city, that it would be nice to renovate the middle school. I'm not sure that fiscally, that after taking on the elementary school debt, what, 25 million, that adding $9 million to that plus $300,000, so really 10, 10-2 at this point is going to be an economic, you know, something that we can even do. I think we've kind of maxed out, so I'm kind of thinking more like that ought to be factored into where the debt takes the next dip at. And I guess Teresa can help you determine where that is, and then what would we need to keep it up and running until that point in time?
Yeah, know that when we developed this, we actually developed it with your debt in mind. For example, 2011 was a really heavy debt year for you, but now that you've refinanced, this is based on your previous debt service. I know now that you've refinanced, we need to sit and take a look at it and go out, but I do know that that was how it was originally, what originally drove it.
Okay. That's exactly right. We've level loaded our debt over the years. And as for me, I think what I'd like to see from you and the school board is what you think we really need to do and what makes sense. And then if we have to go off and engage and do long-range planning, which is what I think we need to do, this is exactly what we want. So we're going to have to structure ourselves in a long-range manner to make sure we increase our revenues and do what we have to to get the revenues into town so that we can support things in the long range.
Yeah, I mean, what I would tell you is what you see here is what we believe really needs to be done.
Yeah.
But I also know that the economy has taken a turn and we're heavily impacted by that. So I recognize what Mr. Hunt is saying as well. You know, the stimulus money is going to do some good for us in terms of getting a few projects off of here, but you're right, we need to long-term plan because while, you know, we can limp the middle school along, you know, it can only go so far, but we, you know- But we, you know, we need to work together as a community and figure out how we're going to, you know, make the right changes for it.
That's exactly right. And don't get me wrong, I'm not advocating throwing good money after bad. But, you know, we need to look, we need to open up our options here on the middle school. I think we all know the age of the school. We do appreciate your comments about that is part of the history of the city and that it needs to be renovated. The question is, is there a way to do that in smaller chunks, even though not always as efficient? It may be all that we can do as a city right now without breaking the bank. As I said, we did take on 25 million in debt, and we just made really our first payments in this year. So to think that three years from now, we're going to be able to take that type of debt, and I'm thinking that number may be low.
Yeah, I would be honest with you because we're basing it off of the estimate for this year. So I agree with you. I think it will, as each year goes out, it's going to move higher and higher. So, but, you know, no, we're going to continue to look at it, and it may be worth us doing a study. Somebody may be able to come in and say, hey, you can do this, this, and this, some, you know, architects. We just wanted to make sure we got it on there to say, we got to start dealing with it, and we knew what the highest priority items were, so.
Are there any other questions for Dr. Parrish?
Just mostly a comment. The last two renovations, the high school and building the elementary school, we have managed to phase construction so we avoided the use of trailers, which is less educationally sound than a real building. So I don't know how much y'all looked into that for using trailers, but last time we were looking at it, it was more like a half million, you know, for just renting, and it's totally gone. So.
Yeah, certainly some of we'll look at it, but, you know, we want to make sure we keep that instruction going, so, but thank you.
Any other questions, Dr. Parrish?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Transportation and drainage are a critical part of the city of Pecosin, included in the plan of projects that have been deemed necessary for several years.
Can we just get those lights, please?
The projects include the widening of the With Creek Road south, neighborhood drainage projects, Pecosin Avenue, Little Florida Road realignment, and row acquisition, bike paths and sidewalks. Public safety is also another critical area we have here in the city. There's a need to replace a fire pumper that was built in 1990. Public work needs mostly relate to equipment. Although there are various pieces of equipment that are needed, included here are only those that are greater than the $100,000 threshold. These include an excavator and a wheel loader. The other much larger item is the replacement of the public works compound. This includes the public works area, the garage, and the utilities. There has also been a need for additional facilities and improvements to the existing facilities. Some of the present parks and recreation facilities do not meet the existing needs of the users. The projects included in the CIP plan include the Messick Road Breakwater, South Lawson Park expansion and renovation, the Boomhouse renovation, and the Amory Warfield. The last item in the plan is the Pump Station 2 rehabilitation. Pump Station 2 is located at Yorktown Road and Hunts Neck Road. With the increased home construction in this vicinity, the pump station is in need of enhancement to support the additional wastewater that will flow through the station with the, flow through the station. The total amount for all the projects in the CIP plan is $28,276,039. And I'll try to answer any questions that may happen.
Questions for Theresa?
Well, I guess Theresa, this question is more for Joseph than for you, but it deals with the Pecosin-Little Florida Road realignment. Because of safety factors, would funding from the ARA be able to accommodate any kind of a solution to that area down there?
It could if we had enough money to cover it. We only have $293,846.
Do we have to match some for that?
No.
I thought around about, well, this is years ago, too, was like $275,000. I don't remember what the.
I don't, I can't remember.
I can't remember the cost that Cuben Transportation gave us many years ago.
Frank, that, for me at least, that item is pretty low on the priority list, given other things like the schools and getting sidewalks into town. I see and hear they're looking at a roundabout. I know I've talked to some people down there, and what I'd also like to have us look at is just squaring it up so that you bring, bring laden way in line with Pecosin Avenue, if you know what I mean, moving laden way over a little bit.
We know what you mean, but it also involves signalization.
Squaring?
Squaring it involves signalization to meet the requirements of the Transportation Safety Board.
The buying property also.
So that means that you're putting lights in everybody's window in that.
But I don't want to signalize.
But I guess my comment on this thing is, yet again, you have brought before the entire council a Parks and Rec program that includes nothing for the Western Precinct, nothing. Okay? So I would send that message strongly back to Parks and Rec that if you're not planning on having something in the Western Precinct in terms of parks, then you're not going to get my support on any type of Parks and Rec. I think we've spent a lot of money in the past years with my support for projects in the Central, projects in the Eastern Precinct. Not one city park is located in the Western Precinct, and the Western Precinct has children also.
I think this plan was started, like, you know, Dr. Parrish said earlier, and I think going forward, there's going to be a lot of, probably a lot of changes.
Any other questions for Theresa?
Yes, how much money do we have in the budget in FY 10? How much money do we have in the budget in this coming year for the transportation and drainage?
Including the $300,000 of stimulus money, it's approximately almost $600,000, I think.
So we have almost, so we can basically cover that $600,000. The school projects, as Dr. Parrish said, hopefully they can cover that. They've, that's over a half million, and we've got $300,000. And then the sewer fund at a half million dollars, the sewer fund is the one fund, I think, that's healthy. We can afford that out of the sewer fund, is that not correct?
We'd have to borrow that money.
We'd have to borrow the money?
We'd have to borrow that money to.
Don't, don't we have a positive fund balance in the sewer fund?
We do, but not enough to cover that.
Not enough to cover that?
No.
So what can we, what do you expect we can do in FY 10 from the budget we have?
I think, I think we've, with the Pump Station 2, I think we've asked for the stimulus money. I think that's one of the projects that are out there that I think, that I think we're working on for stimulus funds, and we have to borrow that money in order to get that done.
My, my general comment, I mean, Gene had his comment, and I understand he's been consistent on this about park facilities in Western, and that is, that is a good goal. My number-one priority is still remaining sidewalks. I'd really like to get some sidewalks on Pecosin Avenue and With Creek, wherever we can, so we can get that, the Trix, not With Creek, Pecosin Avenue and Little Florida. Really like to get those sidewalks put in. And right now in the budget, I don't see any money in the budget for sidewalks. Is that because, are we still going to put the $150,000 stimulus money towards sidewalks this year?
I think that's later on in the.
Well, I was going to bring it up now because.
Then Joseph can address that.
Sidewalks is my number-one item.
I can answer that one if we get to resolution, if you like, but basically, when staff looked at that target area, we looked at, one, because it had the most right-of-way already dedicated to the city, but the problem that we ran into was really requirements for ARA money is it has to meet federal guidelines and regulations. And that's when it kicks in a little different design criteria. Instead of just following state regulations, which is tough enough to retrofit an area, you have to follow the federal. And as listed in the memo, you see where you can't have drop-offs with changes in elevations from roads. And here you notice a lot of roadways are raised to accommodate the traffic. So in looking at that area, everything just added up to where.
Right, just for the people at home who are following this, I think the one section you're talking about is the north side of Little Florida, between the Farm Fresh parking lot and Gaylin, basically those two blocks.
Right.
Those are the areas on the north side that you were looking at. And what you had written up is, there's utility poles in the way, there's underground utilities, there's also culverts that go down, so you have drop-offs, and that's the problem.
Right. You'd have to accommodate the drainage, you would be required to pipe it, you would be required to bury the utilities, you would have to supply curb and gutter for the roadway, not just that side. It has to be the entire roadway.
Both sides of the road?
Yes.
Could we put that sidewalk on the southern part of Little Florida to get those?
We did look at that in the initial look, but that side suffers even worse because.
No right-of-way, Tom.
There's not a lot of right-of-way there. Really, it's just at the top of the bank. And then you actually have utility poles there that provide the service line from the northern side to that pole to the home. So even that would still have to be buried, so.
So my question then is, are you saying that this can't be done unless we spend a ton of money, or you're saying this should not be done with these particular funds because we could do it cheaper in a different map, in a different way?
It's highly unlikely to be able to do this project to meet the federal guidelines without expending additional monies out of City Pecosin.
Much additional. Because if it's, if it's less than what we would spend to do whatever we can do without meeting federal guidelines, then we may as well do that, I would think.
Well, before we can get to that number, we would have to spend money to come up to that money, to that account. We'd have to survey the land, we'd have to design the roadway, and then determine where the water, the stormwater's going to go. So in order to get that number for you, I'd have to spend money to do that.
Historically, that area, Hopkins Court and Astrid Mews have had some serious drainage problems after the storm of the century or whatever else. And, you know, we fought this a few years ago, was how we're going to really solve the problem, and we come up with some, you know, cut measures that didn't, you know.
We spent a fair amount of money going in and doing some improvements, but.
Yeah.
We also took a look at the drainage that would be involved and realized that we didn't have the right-of-ways.
We had to cut, we had to cut all across Little Florida going down Smith Road.
Right.
Down that way, and you said we didn't have the right-of-way.
Well, you'd spend probably more than twice that just on acquiring right-of-way.
Yes.
But certainly, I think the north side of Little Florida Road is going to be, in the future, the easiest approach when we do get there.
I'm just wondering if that's not really more caught up in, in more of an improvement. I mean, Little Florida Road by itself is a weakness in the city. I don't think there's anybody here that says it's wide enough that it has all the attributes that it needs. So my, very much like where I was talking about, I'm not advocating throwing good money after bad at the schools. Same thing applies to Little Florida Road. I'm not sure that we want to go put sidewalks on an area that we may just take up when we do the road widening, which I think is inevitable. So, but, you know, obviously sidewalks are a great thing. The ones that we have are good attributes to the city. I would just not advocate rushing into it for the sake of getting something down on the pavement.
It sounds like what Joseph was saying, that from the ARA standards, that sidewalks down Little Florida.
Would have to come out of local dollars.
Are not part of the stimulus money, and we need to look elsewhere to spend that money.
They're not part of stimulus money. What I would ask staff to do, though, is work with Margaret Cublins on safe routes to schools grants, because she's done safe routes to school grants in multiple states and is very well-versed and is willing to work pro bono, essentially, be with her experience. I've sat down and talked with her. If you, staff could sit down and work with her to see if there is some way we can get grant money. Unfortunately, I think there is a match with that money, so it's not free, but I think that is the long term. And come up with a plan that will get Little Florida and Pecosin Avenue sidelined.
Well, and I think this kind of goes back to, and we visit this subject every time we do the roads, and we talk about our priorities, our Victory Boulevard and With Creek Road. I'll be quite honest with you, that's not my priority. My priority is Little Florida. Little Florida is the weakest of our links in the city of Pecosin, and we do not have willing partners, either in York County or in Hampton. So I'm wondering, you know, from our perspective, why we keep aligning, trying to get Victory Boulevard widened when it's obvious that four lanes going to two in York County's not going to get us anywhere. Likewise, four, five lanes going to two in Hampton's not going to get us anywhere. But we have a serious need within our own city that we ought to be addressing, and that is Little Florida Road.
I could get behind that. I could really get, and one thing I would like to say, since you touched on it, Gene, is on the widening of With Creek Road, the only thing that I would support is going to three lanes, not to five. And I believe that's something that we, we had out there before, so if you could, could take note of that. I believe that was the consensus we had before, was three lanes, not five on With Creek.
But that's when VDOT said, no, you couldn't do three lanes.
Right.
And that's why, that's why Gordon's out there doing his job tonight.
Yeah, and one other, one other point on the sidewalks, maybe we can't do those two blocks to get up to Gaylin. That would be, that'd be very good, because then you can walk easily to the high school on backroads and through the woods. But there's another section of sidewalks that would be good, and that is on Pecosin Avenue between Little Florida and Cedar Road. The sidewalks already run about a third of the way, and that just stops. Could we continue the sidewalks with the money, the stimulus money, could we continue the sidewalks in that area using the same design?
We can use the stimulus money to go towards, you know, transportation projects. The difficulty that we're having as staff is meeting the timeline that we have. We have to advertise, once we get through this entire process, we have to advertise at least 90 days in advance of the deadline to advertise, what they call obligate the money. So that's putting us in the November, December timeframe. And before we even get to that point, there's a series of hoops, processes that we have to go through that, in our meetings with VDOT, it'll be really difficult, we would have to be very aggressive even to get to that point. The reason why we put the asphalt resurfacing in was kind of, one, it needed to be done, but two, it was a catch-all, that if we couldn't make something work, we could go back to the NPO and slide that money over so we wouldn't lose it.
Well, and I think that's a good strategy. From best I can tell, we really don't have a project that's ready to go. But what we do have are roads that need to be repaired.
Right.
And if we can repair our roads and keep them in really good shape, then we avoid, when you're ready to do sidewalks, that the road, we've let the roads go on top of them. So I'm thinking that the best bang for our buck right now with, with that stimulus money is to take care of our roads and take care of more roads than what we had originally planned to. I think I only saw 10 roads, road projects on the list that we got a couple weeks ago.
The paving list you got, right.
Okay? And that's our normal. So what I would, what I would recommend is that we accelerate that and then look at taking a year off of roads and do something else when we have a plan.
Right, and I'd again ask staff to get that plan, to get sidewalks, see what it needs, needs to be done to get sidewalks on Pecosin Avenue in Little Florida, and work with Margaret Cublins in safe routes to schools.
And I would encourage.
We can continue to look at that.
I would encourage you to see if you can get it done by December or whatever the deadline is, because I think there are some sidewalks that you might be able to accomplish. And I would, I would always do it for sidewalks at this point over roads if that is, if there's any possibility of that. And we actually have some sidewalks down, that exist down Pecosin Avenue that I think were put in in the '40s. So even repairing a sidewalk, they're very, very bad. Rather than repairing a road, I would prefer that.
Is there any other questions of Theresa before I open the public hearing?
Yes, one other thing I'd like to note, and that's the Messick Point Breakwater. That's something that is all the way out in FY 14. I think if we want to be. I think if we want to be, we've already had some discussions about further developing that area out at Messick. That's something I'd like to see accelerated and see if we can't get some grant money for that. And one person, Tom Powers, is one person who is very familiar with a lot of the grant money situations and has been very active. I'd like to thank him for his service on Parks and Rec. But he was talking to me the other day about some grant money that we could get. If you could look into that to see if we could accelerate that Messick Point Breakwater, because I think that would help a lot to further develop the Marina.
Anything, pump station number two, are we going to do that this year?
We have it in there if we can get funding for it, either with stimulus money or if I think there's some developments that are in that area that are looking to...
In the Public Works Building?
Public Works compound, we put way out. That's out a lot further.
Is there, Judy, is there any reason that we need to move this forward right now? Is there some type of deadline out there?
What, for the CIP? No, because there's no funding being appropriated.
I agree.
We don't have funding.
Exactly.
But if you don't have a plan, when you get money, it's a problem.
So let me kind of summarize at least what I've heard here, and y'all can agree with me or disagree with me. What I heard was that the school plan is based on pre-financing options and doesn't recognize what our current blend of financing would be and when the new dip would be to align our schools, and that that might need some work. What I've heard is that there's no projects in here for the Western Precinct whatsoever, and that it's been that way for some number of years. And that we really don't really have a plan for sidewalks on the ground right now.
Right.
And we're not really ready to say one way or the other. It would just be my recommendation that we kind of send this back and that we realign it, because if you have a CIP, if it's going to mean anything to us whatsoever, it has to have a sense of reality. And right now, we'd just be passing the document. Now, I'll vote for it because I know there's no money.
I guess what I would like to do, since this has been advertised as a public hearing, I would like input from the public. And then under considerations, Gene, if that's the direction you want to take, we can move forward with that.
Very well.
One other thing I'd like to point out, too, Gene, is the planning commission had several work sessions on this. You've had none. So, you know, you could postpone it and then have your work sessions and come back later for adoption.
Good enough. All right.
But at this point, what I'd like to do is open the public hearing, and anyone that would like to speak on the capital improvement plans for FY 2010 through 2014, now is the time. Yes, sir.
My name is Julian Cox. I live at 166 Pasture Road. My comments are about the neighborhood drainage project, focusing on that. I sent a letter in last Thursday to the city manager's office to be distributed to you dated May 14th that I sent to the Hazard Mitigation Committee, part of the work going on there, about the vulnerability of Pecoson being caused by sea level rise relative to land. We've got no...
Sorry, I can't hear you, Mr. Cox. Can you speak up a little bit, please?
Yeah, it had to do with sea level rise relative to land, and I asked for it to be distributed to you. I thought it'd be good to have that background as I focus on the drainage issue. And throughout the letter, that I tried to use the works that are authored by expert scientists to build the case of why sea level rise relative to land represents the most critical hazard vulnerability to the city, and also that includes stormwater management. On page 10 of the letter, that I'll be getting to in a second. Their publications are clearly referenced in my letter. It is their reports about the implications of sea level rise relative to land that really matters, since 90% of Pecoson's in flood plain. I've strived in my letter to properly consolidate and represent their works. And we already know that sea level rise relative to land's impacting us. That's why Hurricane Isabel, or Tropical Storm Isabel, that missed Pecoson by about 60 miles, is a low-end Category 1 hurricane, caused a maximum water level the same as the 1933 tide, the August tide, which is a Category 3 hurricane, that went right up the James River. And that's on page two of that letter. So it's already impacted us by the damage that was done here by Hurricane Isabel. Another point I'd like to make is that the tide stations are operated by the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration that are near this area, Soul's Point, and also Kip to Peak and Gloucester Point are the kind of stations that have had long-term records. And at each one of these stations, about 60% of the sea level rise relative to land is caused by regional land subsidence. When you look at it close, though, you find that it's different rates of land subsidence at each station. There are some slight specific characteristics of this land subsidence. And NOAA has done this for many years, like 50 to 80 years at these tide stations, and therefore have very good confidence levels, like 95% confident that their numbers are correct. 40% is basically global sea level rise due to climate conditions, climate change. So it's a long-term process. Another more recent document published by Dr. Boone over at VIMS deals with extra tidal high water. And what I'm talking about there is that you have the highest astronomical tides and lowest astronomical tides that are predicted by the celestial bodies. And anytime you get a nor'easter or a tropical storm and the tidal surge gets, or the storm tide gets higher than what's predicted, that's considered extra tidal. And we had three of these events in 2006. Ernesto, on September 1st, we had the two nor'easters, one on October 7th, and another one November 22nd. All of these flooded Pasture Road where I live. There's a picture in there on page 5, I believe, that shows, I took it, I took right on the October 7th storm during the high tide. And the point I'm trying to make here is that the note here is that these high water levels are achieved during these kind of events. And as sea level rise continues, and scientists reject them from 2 to 5 feet by 2,100, sounds like a long time away, but nonetheless, it continues, the process is already happening, and that process can accelerate. So I think we need to pay close attention to that going forward. So I guess after looking at these historical events, and it gets down to the capital improvements program for drainage, where we're going to spend $600,000 from FY 10 to make ditches wider, deeper, I'm not sure what's going to happen there, and another $400,000 in FY 11 to mitigate flooding in some of the lowest line uplands of Pecoson. I question whether or not that's going to be a proper solution to the flooding issues. Let me be very specific. I'm very sensitive to flooding issues, and I certainly feel for the citizens that may be getting flooded by some of these extra tidal high-water events. So I guess in that light, I feel that there are a couple of, what I would think, that we need to look at real close before we spend the money doing these kind of projects. And one of them is, is that doing these, expanding these ditches really reduce the flood hazard vulnerability to low-level uplands caused by rainfall. If the discharge end of the ditches are full of seawater during one of these, you know, during one of these high-tide events, and then you've got that seawater moving in, that's saltwater, it's higher density than freshwater, then you've got all this impervious surface up here where rainwater's trying to go the other way and drain it. So during these kinds of conditions, I seriously question whether or not making the ditches wider is really going to solve the problem. And not only now, but what happens when we get another, not if, when we get another foot of sea level rise, which is going to happen? We just don't know when it is. The scientific community is saying, not if it's going to happen. There may be some debate about how much it's going to be, and how fast it's going to be, and when it's going to be, but it is going to continue to happen. So in that light, I think we ought to be very careful about spending our money there because it can have an unintended consequence of even causing more flooding, depending on the conditions, the weather conditions at the time. Another thing I've noticed, too, is that part of this ditch project was to dig into the inner tidal zone. And I'm not sure what that's going to do in terms of saltwater intrusion in the groundwater and kill trees in the nearby local area, whether during these extra tidal high-water events that we will be overflowing these ditches or puddling water that gets trapped to be mosquito breeding zones. So these are the kind of things that I think should be very, very carefully considered before spending this kind of money to do these projects. And I recommended in my letter there, a comprehensive sea level impact assessment for the city of Pecoson be done. And I think that we've got two opportunities, great opportunities, to do this kind of thing. One is in the multi-hazard mitigation plan, which is being worked, is in process, and the other is the city's comprehensive plan, to set goals and objectives to do this kind of an assessment. I think this kind of assessment should be done before we actually go start the digging and see, and get the scientific community involved. This is one that is important. You've got some excellent scientists over at VIMS and other places around, in the state of Virginia, but up and down the mid-Mid-Atlantic coast. And I think we should get them involved in this process through setting a goal and objective in either, or both, the multi-hazard mitigation plan or the comprehensive plan to get this kind of assessment made before we spend this money. Just looking to the situation on schools, I would certainly see that as a higher priority, at least in my personal assessment, based on my studies of what these scientists are saying about sea level rise. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
If you have any questions.
Is there others who would like to speak? Okay, if not, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll ask for consideration by council.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'll make a motion that we postpone any action on this until we can at least have a work session and discuss it.
Second. I hear a motion in second. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Holloway.
Aye.
Mr. Vice Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of 6 to 0.
Thank you. We will now move into unfinished business, and I'm looking for a resolution making appointments to the school board.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a resolution to make appointments to the school board with the names inserted for R. Scott Diggs in Central, Robin Sider in Eastern, and Mark Bellamy at large.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Can I comment on this and then vote? No, I'll just vote. My vote is yes.
Aye. Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Holloway.
Aye.
Mr. Vice Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of 6 to 0.
Thank you.
That's fine. Now, I can comment. I just wanted to say, it was a really difficult decision to who we chose to appoint, because all of the candidates were excellent choices. And so if you were not appointed, which most of the applicants were not necessarily just by virtue of the numbers, know that it was not a vote against you. It was, you know, simply who we thought would be the best fit right now. But I do hope that some of the other people will get an appointment in the future. So thank you for putting your name out there.
And I'd like to echo what Tracy said. I talked to 14 out of the 15 applicants, and we really are lucky. They're all top-notch people. I also talked to people on the school board as to what they would like, because after all, they're the ones who do the work and tried to put all that together. And it was a very, very hard decision. And speaking to the recommendation of Alan Melton earlier, I agree with Fred. He's a top-notch guy, he's a great guy. And one of the things I would hope we can use his services for later on, he's indicated an interest in Thomas Nelson Community College, and I believe that the board and that position is coming open when Ray Vronall stands down. So let me just echo what Tracy said. We are very fortunate. The caliber of people made this a very hard decision.
Thank you, Tom. Let's move into new business, please. First item is a resolution designating signatories on city checks and warrants.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is routine. Whenever you have a change of the city manager, assistant city manager, treasurer, deputy treasurer, and it just gives them the authority to sign checks and warrants.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution designating the city manager or the assistant city manager and the treasurer or deputy treasurer as cosigners on all city checks and warrants, revoking all other signatories.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Gene. Motion made in second. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Holloway.
Aye.
Mr. Vice Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of 6 to 0.
Thank you. Then move to item two, a resolution authorizing execution of a commercial credit card account agreement with SunTrust Bank.
Teresa Owens will give you this presentation.
Thanks, Teresa.
Very quickly, we've decided to look at the credit cards and consolidate them all into one centralized account with oversight being with the city manager and the finance department. And SunTrust Bank was the most responsive and required a resolution authorizing that by the city council.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I make a motion that we approve a resolution authorizing the city to execute a commercial credit card account agreement with SunTrust Bank.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Madam Clerk.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Holloway.
Aye.
Mr. Vice Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of 6 to 0.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, just one point, you had adopted the revised...
It's safe to assume you adopted the revised resolution?
Absolutely. Yes. We will now move into item three, a resolution canceling the first meeting of the month of June, July, and August.
Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, this is a routine function that we do each year to allow for vacations. We reserve the second meeting so that we don't have to advertise twice for public hearings.
Yes. Mr. Vice Mayor, will we adopt a resolution that cancels the first meeting of the months of June, July, and August 2009?
Second. Thank you, Frank. Thank you, Garrett. We have a motion in second. Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Holloway.
Aye.
Mr. Vice Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of 6 to 0.
We're now moving into item four, a resolution making appointment to the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission and the Virginia Peninsula Regional Jail Authority.
Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, this resolution has actually been revised as well to include the Colonial Community Criminal Justice Board, and these are boards that the city manager serves on, and we need to appoint Randy Wheeler.
Yes. Mr. Vice Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution making appointments to the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, Virginia Peninsula Regional Jail Authority, and the Colonial Community Criminal Justice Board with the name of J. Randall Wheeler inserted for all three positions.
Thank you, Gene.
Second that.
Thank you, Frank. Motion made in second. Madam Clerk.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Holloway.
Aye.
Mr. Vice Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of 6 to 0.
Okay, we move into item five under new business, resolution requesting that the Virginia Department of Transportation establish an urban system highway project for the city of Pecoson. Judy?
This will be presented tonight by Joseph.
Thank you.
Members of council, as we discussed earlier about the ARRA funding and all the issues associated with that, this resolution is the first process in getting VDOT to program the project for our use of the stimulus money. We discussed some of the design requirements about burying utilities, eliminate drop-offs, accommodate drainage, and Astro requirement, but also, if you look at the last bullet, additional VDOT fees associated with the assistance and administration of the project. This will include essentially... This will include essentially, they, once we get this resolution passed, we will now be accountable for whatever fees that they charge to us in this project. It'll include monitoring and our feedback to them as far as our monitoring process of the contractors. If you go to section two, is where this is outlined. And the reason why I'm pointing this out to you, because there's, bringing this to you here in May, because I wanted to wait till the last possible moment before we get on the books of VDOT of receiving their services. Once we get the process rolling, when we send this to VDOT as far as the project amount for resurfacing of $293,846, whatever projects we have listed, they will ask us, does this include our fees for assisting you in monitoring the project? And of course, we're going to say no. And they will in fact tell us what those fees are, and then we will have to back down that amount for resurfacing to include those fees.
So...
How much more money?
Let me see if I... That basically means that we're now financing the state's inspectors and oversight of the program?
Right.
With local dollars, with dollars that we're supposed to go for local things.
That is correct.
From the funds.
The federal stimulus. It's not its overhead.
So, basically now, the state government's kind of balanced their budget probably with some of this money based on the localities picking it up.
More than likely.
What are the benefits?
Because this whole process has, like Dr. Parrish said, we're still trying to get feedback from the federal government and the Federal Highway Administration as well as VDOT. In order for everyone to try to get their head around what's going on, it's, it's been a journey, both at the regional partnership with PDC and NPO. But I was checking around with other localities, see what they were doing, and they were holding off to this time of the year also before we go agreeing to pay that.
What are we getting, Joseph? How much were the benefits for hiring? 280?
It's $293,846. And it's kind of like a, I guess, I heard a mandatory consultant is what VDOT will be serving as. We will still have to, when we go to advertise this project, we will be requiring the contractor to report to the city, and then we will in turn take that report and report to the state, and then the state will in turn report to the federal government.
Do we have a choice?
No.
If we want to get the stimulus money?
No.
Right, so we don't have a choice.
And so, how much of the 293 would be associated with this?
It's going to be based on the cost of the project, anywhere from...
Is there a percentage?
10 to 10% for, I believe, construction, and 5% for planning.
15%.
15% of a road construction project that the federal government gives us goes back to the state.
And that's just for a sliver of the management fee? That doesn't include a whole lot of the other design and services?
Right.
Is, what is going to be the impact on us from a budgetary, what's going to be the impact on us in, in how much less roads we can pave or a budgetary impact? Because of this?
As far as paying the fees or not using the money at all?
No, by, is this, is this new from, from what we already approved in the budget?
Just take out, take out $40,000 of the 293.
Yeah, so...
And we have $292,000 in the budget.
Why don't you come up and talk it so everybody can hear?
We have 292, and I'm almost positive that's the right number, in the budget right now, and this adds to that amount of money, approximately $300,000. Of course, part of that will be the engineering, so it's still, or the management or whatever we have to pay VDOT.
Well, yeah, we'll have to back that out of the total.
Out of the 292.
Forty thou, approximately.
But we took $150,000 of what we normally put in drainage and resurfacing and use that in the general fund this year, and we have $300,000, almost $300,000 of the stimulus money.
Thank you.
So, the benefit then is roughly 293 minus 15%.
15%.
15%.
What we'll do is we'll, we'll cut that paving back to where we cover those fees.
So, we're basically getting an extra $230,000.
That would go for...
It would be a lot.
Let's say we, say we went back to the sidewalks thing that we were talking about.
That's my question.
I'm still trying to gather research, I mean, information from VDOT on that.
I wanted to know, on section one, you have...
This is all the information I have, just on asphalt resurfacing, not including the big bid package, which is just the, on just resurfacing.
My question on number one, you...
Yes, ma'am.
You were wanting to make a resolution that the Virginia Department of Transportation is requested to establish an urban system highway project for the improvement of roadways by means of asphalt resurfacing. Can we amend that to say by means of asphalt or sidewalk resurfacing? I would like to see that, if that's possible, and/or sidewalk resurfacing. And that way, we would at least be covered for you to...
Well, I don't want to...
They don't get involved in sidewalks.
They, they probably will, but I'm not sure that I want to give them the keys to go do that, you know?
Give Joseph the keys, though, right?
Well, if you amend this, you're basically asking the state to monitor our sidewalk projects, as I understand what you just said.
But not only that, if you decide that sidewalks don't happen, that's part of this resolution, and any money, anything they're going, you've accrued for them to charge you, you will have to pay that.
So, I think...
I guess it would be better to do a separate resolution or...
The and/or doesn't cover that?
Well, I think it would be cleaner if, if you want to insert that, that it come in the form of another resolution in lieu of amending this one.
Okay.
I think, I think if we can keep the highway segregated, we know what the fee is for that. We know it's going to be 15%. And if, if we put something else in, an unknown...
Well, I'd like to see you come up with one that involves sidewalks, then, that we can do the same exact thing, this is sidewalks.
I would really like to do that also. I just want to reemphasize how, how under the gun we are as far as the timeline.
I'm good with this one. We're running a sidewalk one next week.
What is, what's your timeline?
We have to be ready, we have to have everything to the Commonwealth Transportation Board for consideration at least 90 days before February. And we have to have Commonwealth Transportation Board obligate the money within that timeframe for advertisement. And that includes a state environmental report, a NEPA document notifying all state agencies of the intent to resurface a certain road, to notify a core of engineers that we're going to resurface the road, notify DCR just in case there's any wetland impacts. We have to do all, we have to go through this entire process to resurface a road that's currently existing. And that's part of the frustration, not only from, from staff, but other members in the Hampton Roads region, that it's, it's a lot being put on. I mean, there's cities that are hiring employees just to do the NEPA document. That is, their only task is to take care of the NEPA document, because you have to advertise it, you have to have public involvement, and you have to have public input.
You have a rough... I'm sorry.
That's okay, I just...
You have a rough number on what it costs to do a foot of road?
I don't know.
And a foot of sidewalk, just roughly? I mean, what are we going to get for 250,000, is the question?
A block.
Say again?
A block.
A block. Well, I don't know, maybe 10 feet, I don't know.
I think I heard one time to do a sidewalk like a quarter mile for like two, like $300,000.
Yeah, but you can, you can resurface a fair amount.
Yeah, resurfacing and putting new virgin...
It depends on the topography and what has to be moved on the sidewalks, too.
Well, you've got to cover ditches with the...
Right, if you've got to pipe it or not.
Pipe it, yeah.
Can I ask that, and certainly we don't have a choice in state law, it is what it is.
Right.
And we'll move forward with it, but can I ask that we put this on the very next, and I don't know if you keep a, kind of a file of things that we want to talk about with the state delegates, but we want to talk with them about this ASAP, next meeting.
We can do that.
And with that, I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution.
Motion made to adopt the resolution. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made in second.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Holloway.
Aye.
Mr. Vice Mayor, the motion carried by vote of six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph.
Mr. Vice Mayor, if we could talk now about, we were talking about earlier, which is another resolution possibly for sidewalks.
Absolutely.
Is, Joseph, is there anything that we could do to help you get leverage with a resolution so that would give you options in this next month before we meet again to further explore or develop the sidewalk issue?
Or, or resurface.
Or resurface.
As, as far as in that target area?
In that target area or on Pecosa, on, yeah, Pecosa Avenue where it's flat already and you don't need to repipe. Because if you look at that Pecosa Avenue area, already you just have sidewalks set back from the drainage ditch, and I would envision keeping it the same type design for continuity of what we have already for a third of the way.
Well, that's the thing, once you touch it, it, it doesn't stay the same. It has to go to federal and believe...
10 foot wide.
Plus, you have to have at least two feet from the back of CG6 curbing gutter.
Yeah, I'm kind of, I'm a little bit confused on what we're doing here.
Well, what we, what we were talking about, Jean, is earlier, they were looking for a resolution to go back and look at the possibility of sidewalks or going back and putting a new surface on those existing sidewalks that are in the city. And, you know, whether, whether we probably be in the best interest to have a work session so that we could understand it better. I, at this particular point, I understand what we're seeing. I think the furthest one along is the one that Joseph looked at, which was the north side of Little Florida Road. And the, the existing sidewalks, if we do anything other than work that Jonathan has done in the past, they have to go back and be reconfigured to suit federal mandates. And so, I think we're between a rock and a hard spot. But what I would propose is setting up a, a work session to, to discuss this subject so that we all can get better informed.
I think that because, I think the train's almost left the station, hasn't it, Joseph?
Yes. I mean, we...
Even for...
In order for staff to get everything completed in order to meet the, the requirements to get it advertised, we, we're under the gun.
Okay.
Could you note that, Judy? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Joseph. We're going to move into item H, which is comments from our acting city manager, Judy.
Mr. Vice Mayor and members of council, Bayside Conventance Center celebrated their 20th anniversary last week, and I represented the mayor at that function and presented a proclamation signed by the mayor. It doesn't seem like 20 years since that facility was started, but it has, and it's at capacity there most of the time. We got word from Bay disposal, you've been asking us to see if we could get the garbage collection scheduled on the Wednesday schedule changed to coincide with recycling, and they plan to do that. They're going to change the garbage pickup hopefully on July 1. We need time to notify the residents of the change. So, until July 1, they'll have two different collection dates, and then hopefully it'll be on that one day. And that's all I have under comments.
Okay, under council directives, Tracy, I might ask you to start.
Thanks, I won't be overlooked. I wanted to thank everybody who came out to the Pecosa Business Alliance Day a couple of weekends ago and to the Kiwanis Barbecue. I love seeing the community come out and come together like that, and I hope that this will continue as an annual tradition. It was really a great day, and we had perfect weather. I also wanted to remind citizens that all city council meetings are now available online, both in real time, you can stream it on your computer, and later on as an archive. I was checking it out last week, and there were problems if you were using the Mozilla Firefox, but if you use Internet Explorer, it works fine. So, I think they're working on that issue. And just as a comment, I would like to see all city work sessions and board meetings recorded and archived as well, now that we have the technology. It seems like a, a natural progression. And on a technical note, our city's website could use some, a little bit of work, and I know that we have such a talented group of, of wonderful citizens. I was wondering if, if there's anybody out there who would be willing to donate their time and their skills to the city. Vicki says she'd be happy to take your calls and, and set you up with, we use Dreamweaver?
Yes.
To, for our website. So, if you're familiar with Dreamweaver and you're interested in, in looking at modifying the city's website a little bit, that's an opportunity for you to put something good on your resume. And finally, we never really commented, had a chance to comment about the budget. It, it was a terrible year for the budget. I'm, I'm told that this was a hard year. It's my first budget year, and it was painful. But I, I wanted to publicly thank Teresa and Robin and so many others for their hard work, as well as input that I've had from various citizens. We do have a great community of really smart people, and I'm very grateful for input from locals. And I, I'm afraid to say that next year, I think it may be tough as well, but prepare yourselves, I guess. I'm trying, I'm trying to prepare myself. Thank you.
I don't have anything, though.
Tom?
Yes, just for the, the public, Judy, if you could give a quick recap of what we did in the budget, and we talked earlier about the engineer position specifically, because there was something, I think, in the newspaper that might not have been quite right.
Sure. At your May 11 meeting, council adopted a voluntary reduction in force and incentives plan, which, according to that plan, there were 18 city employees that were eligible for full retirement from VRS. And this plan was offered to all 18 employees. And of that, of that also included in the plan was an incentive to those positions that were being eliminated. Out of our approach to all of the employees, we had 13 full-time positions that were eliminated. Of those 13 positions, six took the retirement and seven additional positions were eliminated. One additional position was downgraded by $16,000 and moved into another department entirely. And as such, we'll be maintaining our infrastructure as well as doing inspections, and will be required as soon as possible to obtain certification as a building official. So, we obtained some savings there. We also funded the dock master position for only three months at Messick Point, and we'll be going out to bids for trying to get a business to relocate to Messick Point as well, as take over management of our facilities and arenas down there. So, that bid proposal will be coming out very shortly. And I think that's all that we did as far as personnel.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Jean.
That was about a $584,000 savings in our budget.
Okay, thank you for that. Just to echo what Tracy said, I agree with recording and, and archiving the work sessions. Probably that's a good thing to talk about at our next work session. One thing I, I'd like to emphasize is Messick Point is a real treasure that we have. I know a lot of people enjoyed it, including myself, for most of the Memorial Day weekend. We are looking at, at actions to better utilize the existing peer. And also, one thing, if we could get added to a work session or a general session, there is a person who's interested in buying a piece of land out there where the present, fishing, fishing, the bait store used to be right there on Messick, putting in eco-tours, water sports, he's really big into sports, fishing, and kayaking, has a lot of ideas. And I think it'd be good if he could talk to council so that we can, we can work towards getting an overall plan that both we and the IDA are on the same page on for Messick, because that, that place really is a gem. It, it's amazing how good that is. And then the, the final thing I have is, I'd really like to thank the American Legion. And then the, the final thing I have is I'd really like to thank the American Legion. The Memorial Day program yesterday was very well done, very moving. It is every year, and for those who attended, you know what I'm saying, and for those who didn't, I'd highly recommend you, you come next year, because it is done every year, and, and the American Legion puts on a very good show.
Councilman Freeman.
I'm not, unless I ask my.
Councilman Krieger.
Just one thing real quick, just to add to Tom's comments on the ceremony yesterday. A big thanks to the high school kids from Pecosin High School and as well as TAP, the ROTC, who come, who come out here on a day off and spend an hour, hour and a half, two hours, whatever it is, to take part of the ceremony. Very nice, and, you know, it's very enjoyable. We have about 80 people there, I think, this year, which is a fairly good showing. That's it, sir.
Thank you very much. I guess the only thing I would like to offer is, you know, now that we do have some new technology here at City Hall, I think the time is fast approaching, and going through this budget cycle has been proof in the pudding for me, is that, you know, if, if we would go to computer-based laptops for, for all of our minutes, everything that we could go back and, and, you know, now we, now I know for me, I manually have to go in and look at, you know, all agendas or other documents that I have, when it would be so simple to access through a laptop. I know that funds are limited now, but, you know, in, in the not-too-distant future, it's, with the amount of paper that we have flowing through here, you know, and the number of calls that we get, it's, it's kind of difficult to keep a, a record of everything and to get the information that you need. I just offer that for information, because, you know, our staff still has to spend an inordinate amount of time of putting this stuff together for us, and it, it could be so much quicker if it was all electronically based. You know, but just something for thought. Thank you all for your cooperation, and I will ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, that we adjourn. Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Holloway.
Aye.
Vice Mayor, the motion carried by vote of six to zero.
The meeting is adjourned.